I note that the hour has come and that a quorum of this council is present. I am asking all members, please take your seats. All visitors, please retire to their seats outside the rails. Before proceeding, I will ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent and/or vibrate. And I'm asking for all sidebar conversations to be taken out of the council chambers. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Archbishop Mary Palmer, Presiding Prelate of the Philadelphia Council of Clergy. She is here today as the guest of major - Councilwoman Jamie Gartier. I would ask all members and guests to please rise. She's also a member of the Elekshimus Zeta Phi Beta Incorporated.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilwoman Gartier. The head attire that I'm wearing today was made by an 83-year-old Nigerian woman who gifted it to me, and she said, "Wear your crown brightly," which is why she used gold. And she said, "Black means that even if you are lamenting, you are looking for hope." This is particularly emotional for me because today my late father would have been 90, and he did many a prayer in this chamber, so I do so in his honor. It is because of your mercies, God, that we are not consumed. Your compassions fail not. They are new every morning. Great is your faithfulness. For this day destined by you, for us to come together into this chamber where we conduct business for all people, we say thank you. We thank you for our rising, for safe travel to this place. But even in this moment, God, we thank you for each and every council member who has chosen to serve your people, who give them the vision and the guidance to do what is right, not just for the part but for the whole, for the least, the last, and the lost, those that are in need, and those that bring service. So we thank you, God, for each one, for their lives, for their willingness to do the right thing, even in tough times. We ask continued protection, God, on all of those attached to them by blood or law, that no hurt, harm, or danger shall befall them, that you will continue to be the voice of reason, mercy, and justice, as they deliberate and make decisions and cast votes that will impact us all, including themselves. So, God, for this moment, we thank you for the Black History Month. We thank you for our heritage. We thank you for our forefathers and those that have laid the foundation upon whose soldiers we stand. In every genre of society, faith, politics, education, corporate, marketing, whatever the genre, we thank you for those trailblazers. Now guide us even now. May your sweet spirit continue to fall in this place. Help us to do so decently and in order, and so that you will not only get the glory, but those in attendance will be empowered and edified. And if I may say, Satan will be horrified, but that you will be glorified. And we ask it all in the name that I call my Savior, Jesus the Christ, in whom I live, move, and have my being. Amen, amen, and amen. God bless you.
Council will now be at ease. The chair thanks the Archbishop for the invocation. February 13th of 2025. The chair recognizes council member Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 13th, 2025 be approved.
It has been moved and property seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 13th, 2025 stand approved. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize, I needed to restart the system.
Council will be at ease. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Council will be at ease. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember Harity.
The chair thanks the council member. Leave will be granted. The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Good morning, Mr. President. On behalf of the minority, there is no request for leave of absence.
The chair thanks the council member. The chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's council session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session of council, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved and property seconded that the legislative matters stated by Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today. Should those matters arise during the course of this session of council, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. At this time, the chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson, who will present a resolution honoring and celebrating the Philadelphia Tribune, an advocate and trailblazer for the African-American community on the occasion of its 140th year anniversary as the oldest continuously published newspaper owned and operated by African-Americans. Will Mr. Bob Bogle and those accompanying him please join the council member on my behalf at the podium? Joining Majority Leader Richardson are the following: Councilmember Phillips, Councilmember Dr. Nina Maia, Councilmember Brooks, Councilmember Lazada, Councilmember Squillert, Councilmember O'Rourke, Councilmember Landau, Councilmember Gartier, and Councilmember Bass.
All right. Thank you so much, Council President. It is certainly my humble honor and privilege to read this resolution on your behalf, Council President. As we know, the home of the Philadelphia Tribune certainly started in your district, so we thank you so very much on the occasion of this Black History Month. To be honored to present this resolution to you, the Bob Bogle, here in Philadelphia City Council. So today, we are honoring and celebrating the Philadelphia Tribune, an advocate and trailblazer for the African-American community on the occasion of its 140-year anniversary as the oldest continuously published newspaper owned and operated by African-Americans.
This is a wonderful day in council. The Tribune has been amazing to all of us in Philadelphia, especially the African-American community. So, to start, whereas Christopher James Perry, senior founder of the Tribune, was born in Baltimore, Maryland in 1856, and upon graduating from high school, relocated to Philadelphia. Although Perry's father wanted him to study law, Perry refused, stating, "For my people to make progress, they must have a newspaper through which they can speak against injustice."
Whereas, after 11 years of reporting for a local daily newspaper while attending night school, Perry's dream of establishing a newspaper came to fruition when he launched the Tribune. And whereas, at the age of 28, Perry published the first edition of a one-page, one-man operation titled Tribune Weekly at 725 Sansom Street.
Whereas, during the post-Reconstruction migration, the Tribune committed itself to improving the standard of living for African-Americans in Philadelphia by covering job openings, civic affairs, social events, and church news.
Whereas, from its inception until his death, Perry wrote about the challenges faced by African-Americans, particularly those in Philadelphia, and worked to give them a platform to address the issues that affected their daily lives.
Whereas, today, the Philadelphia Tribune stands as America's oldest continuously published newspaper owned and operated by African-Americans.
Whereas, over the years, the Tribune has championed issues such as desegregation, equality, equal access to city employment, contracting opportunities, and increasing the representation of African-American judges appointed to Philadelphia Municipal Court.
Whereas, the Tribune has grown from a one-page, one-man operation 140 years ago to a newspaper that is now published five days a week and maintains a website presence. In addition to the newspaper, the company publishes Tribune Magazine now, an arts/entertainment review sojourner, an African-American visitor's guide to Philadelphia, and the leading key, an educational supplement directed to students, parents, and teachers.
Whereas, Robert W. Bogle, the current publisher of the Philadelphia Tribune, continues to lead the organization in its legacy of excellence, upholding its mission of serving the African-American community with integrity and commitment. And whereas, in celebrating this historic milestone, we recognize the invaluable contributions of the Tribune's staff, editors, writers, and all those who have worked tirelessly to maintain the newspaper's legacy of excellence in journalism and service to the African-American community. Now therefore be it...
...resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor and celebrate the Philadelphia Tribune, an advocate and trailblazer for the African-American community on the occasion of its 140th year anniversary as the oldest continuously published newspaper owned and operated by African-Americans.
Congratulations.
The chair recognizes Mr. Robert Bogle.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. President, members of council, the staff of the Philadelphia Tribune, many of which our senior staff is here today, I wish you would acknowledge them because they're the people who make it work. 140 years sounds like a long time, and I've been accused of being here for 140, but I promise you I haven't. What I can say is that we are enormously grateful for this honor. Thank you once again.
Council will be at ease. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson, who will present a resolution honoring and congratulating the Philadelphia Tribune, an advocate and trailblazer for the African-American community on the occasion of its 140-year anniversary as the oldest continuously published newspaper owned and operated by African-Americans.
This is a wonderful day in council. The Tribune has been amazing to all of us in Philadelphia, especially the African-American community. So, to start, whereas Christopher James Perry, senior founder of the Tribune, was born in Baltimore, Maryland in 1856, and upon graduating from high school, relocated to Philadelphia. Although Perry's father wanted him to study law, Perry refused, stating, "For my people to make progress, they must have a newspaper through which they can speak against injustice."
Whereas, after 11 years of reporting for a local daily newspaper while attending night school, Perry's dream of establishing a newspaper came to fruition when he launched the Tribune. And whereas, at the age of 28, Perry published the first edition of a one-page, one-man operation titled Tribune Weekly at 725 Sansom Street.
Whereas, during the post-Reconstruction migration, the Tribune committed itself to improving the standard of living for African-Americans in Philadelphia by covering job openings, civic affairs, social events, and church news.
Whereas, from its inception until his death, Perry wrote about the challenges faced by African-Americans, particularly those in Philadelphia, and worked to give them a platform to address the issues that affected their daily lives.
Whereas, today, the Philadelphia Tribune stands as America's oldest continuously published newspaper owned and operated by African-Americans.
Whereas, over the years, the Tribune has championed issues such as desegregation, equality, equal access to city employment, contracting opportunities, and increasing the representation of African-American judges appointed to Philadelphia Municipal Court.
Whereas, the Tribune has grown from a one-page, one-man operation 140 years ago to a newspaper that is now published five days a week and maintains a website presence. In addition to the newspaper, the company publishes Tribune Magazine now, an arts/entertainment review sojourner, an African-American visitor's guide to Philadelphia, and the leading key, an educational supplement directed to students, parents, and teachers.
Whereas, Robert W. Bogle, the current publisher of the Philadelphia Tribune, continues to lead the organization in its legacy of excellence, upholding its mission of serving the African-American community with integrity and commitment. And whereas, in celebrating this historic milestone, we recognize the invaluable contributions of the Tribune's staff, editors, writers, and all those who have worked tirelessly to maintain the newspaper's legacy of excellence in journalism and service to the African-American community. Now therefore be it...
...resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor and celebrate the Philadelphia Tribune, an advocate and trailblazer for the African-American community on the occasion of its 140th year anniversary as the oldest continuously published newspaper owned and operated by African-Americans. Congratulations.
The chair recognizes Mr. Robert Bogle.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. President, members of council, the staff of the Philadelphia Tribune, many of which our senior staff is here today, I wish you would acknowledge them because they're the people who make it work. 140 years sounds like a long time, and I've been accused of being here for 140, but I promise you I haven't. What I can say is that we are enormously grateful for this honor. Thank you once again.
Council will be at ease. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson, who will present a resolution honoring and congratulating the School District of Philadelphia Superintendent Dr. Tony Wellington for being recognized as Superintendent of the Year by the District Administration Leadership Institute. That's a national recognition. Would Dr. Wellington and those accompanying him please join Councilmember Thomas, who will present a resolution honoring and congratulating the School District of Philadelphia Superintendent Dr. Tony Wellington for being recognized as Superintendent of the Year by the District Administration Leadership Institute. That's a national recognition. Would Dr. Wellington and those accompanying him please join Councilmember Thomas, who is the Chair of Education, and also bring up Councilmember Phillips, who is the Vice-Chair of Education. Joining Chairman Thomas will be Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson, Dr. Nina Maia, Councilmember Brooks, Councilmember Bass, Councilmember Lazada, Councilmember Landau, Councilmember O'Rourke, Councilmember Jamie Gartier, and Mr. Squillert isn't here, and so... Councilmember Jones.
Let's get a Tribune and Mr. Bogle and his team another round of applause. Thank you, Dr. Mr. Bogle, for being the voice of the African-American community, and it's only fitting during Black History Month that we honor you. It's also great you reside in the Second Councilmatic District. The next order of business at this time, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas, who will present a resolution honoring and congratulating the School District of Philadelphia Superintendent Dr. Tony Wallington for being recognized as Superintendent of the Year by the District Administration Leadership Institute. That's a national recognition. With Dr. Wallington and those accompanying him, please join Councilmember Thomas, who's the Chair of Education, and also bring up Councilmember Phillips, who's the Vice Chair of Education. Joining Chairman Thomas will be Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson, Dr. Nina Ma, Councilmember Brooks, Councilmember Bass, Councilmember Lazada, Councilmember Landau, Councilmember O'Rourke, Councilmember Jamie Gortier, and Mr. Scola isn't here, and so Councilmember Jones. It's rock and roll. Chairman Thomas?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Council President, for your leadership. It's an honor to stand here on your behalf as the Education Chair, as well as the person who is looking to really work with my colleagues to move the needle forward as it relates to public education in the City of Philadelphia. We couldn't be more honored to stand here today with our leader, the person who's been a visionary for the last couple of years as it relates to the School District of Philadelphia. If I can paraphrase correctly, Dr. Wallington came in with the idea of moving the needle specifically around academic achievement. His agenda, specifically related to goals and guardrails, has put us in a position not just for him to be recognized as one of the most amazing superintendents in the entire country, but for us as a city to be recognized as it relates to the academic progress that our young people have made coming out the pandemic. So, with that being said, it's an honor to stand here with Dr. Wallington and his entire team, all of the principals, the teachers, the operational and climate staff, the parents, everybody who makes our School District go. While we honor Dr. Wallington, we want you to understand that on behalf of this legislative body, we very much appreciate you, appreciate you as well, too. So, with that being said, I hereby say that honoring and congratulating the School District of Philadelphia Superintendent Dr. Tony Wallington for being recognized as a Superintendent of the Year by the District Administration Leadership Institute.
Again, I want to echo the sentiments of my colleague, our Chair of Education, Councilmember Thomas, and thanking Dr. Wallington for coming into the district and running full seam ahead as a proud School District of Philadelphia mom of two elementary school students and a recent School District of Philadelphia graduate who is now a college freshman at your alma mater, Dr. Wallington, Aggie pride and Aggie mom. We are proud to be here with you. So whereas, Dr. Tony Wallington Senior, Superintendent of the School District of Philadelphia, has been named the 2025 Superintendent of the Year by the District Administration Leadership Institute. And.
Echoing everything my colleague said. And whereas, the District Administration Leadership Institute is the leading national pre-K-212 organization that provides leadership, development opportunities for superintendents, district leaders, and senior staff across the United States. And.
Whereas, Dr. Wallington graduated as a first-generation student at North Carolina A&amp;T University with a Bachelor's of Science in History Education. He later earned a Master's Degree in American Political History from Ohio State, a Master's Degree in School Administration in Educational Leadership from the University of North Carolina, and a Doctorate in Education from the University of North Carolina. And.
Whereas, Dr. Wallington became Superintendent of the Philadelphia School District in June 2022. The Philadelphia School District, the eighth-largest school district in the country, serving more than 100,000 students. And whereas, under his leadership, Philadelphia's public schools have achieved the highest enrollment and graduation rates in a decade, improved standardized test scores, and reduced student dropout rates by more than 1,400 students. And.
Whereas, Dr. Wallington and his team recognized the district's learning networks, launched a two-way communication and feedback platform, and revamped the district's curriculum through the Five-Year Strategic Plan Accelerate Philly. And.
All right. Whereas, research done by Harvard University's Center for Educational Policy Research and the Educational Opportunity Project at Stanford University have shown that the Philadelphia School District outpaces other large urban districts nationwide and similar districts in Pennsylvania. And.
This proud public school parent always also congratulates you of being Superintendent of the Year. Whereas, Amy Dujon, Vice President, Education Media, and summits with the District Administration Leadership Institute praised Wallington, saying, "Tony Wallington has exemplified what it means to lead with integrity, vision, and impact." Thank you. And.
Whereas, the people of Philadelphia are lucky to have this exemplary example of a black man, Dr. Wallington, at the helm of the School District, ensuring a brighter future for the students of our great city. Now, therefore, be it.
Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia honors and congratulates School District of Philadelphia Superintendent Dr. Tony Wallington for being recognized as Superintendent of the Year by the District Administration Leadership Institute.
And further resolved that in a gross copy of this resolution, we present it to Dr. Tony Wallington as a token sincere admiration of this legislative body. Congratulations.
The Chair recognizes Dr. Wallington for remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President, Majority Leader Richardson, members of Council, Education Chair Thomas. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to be in this very fine and hallowed hall this morning. I count it an honor and a privilege to serve the children and families of the School District of Philadelphia. I love living in the nation's sixth-largest city, working in the eighth-largest school district. I'm so proud of our students and their families, their parents and guardians. They're doing the hard, heavy lifting. I want to thank Council for your support, financial and otherwise, for the School District. Thank you very much, as well as our Board of Education, our staff. I'm joined by our Legislative Director, Laura Garbache. Let's give her a big round of applause. And Deputy Chief of Government and Community Relations, Edwin Santana. Finally, Mr. President, I want you to know that I'm excited. On June 16th, I will kick off year four as your Superintendent, and we are going to continue, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, and as President Obama would often say, we are going to continue to work with a fierce sense of urgency to do what is right, do what is right by all of our children. Thank you so much. Good morning.
Council will be at ease. Next, the next order of business is Communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. The Chief Clerk will read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession.
To the President, to the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 623 Rear, North 55th Street, located in the Fourth Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1124 South 56th Street, located in the Third Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code. There are no further communications in my possession, Council President.
Thank you very much. The messages will be presented, will be printed in the journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I have one resolution, a privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution commending and recognizing NFL Hall of Famer Merrill Reese for his nearly fifty-year career as the voice of the Philadelphia Eagles and his exceptional contributions to broadcasting in sports.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing today.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gortier.
Thank you, Council President. Today I have three non-privileged resolutions and one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would a Chief Clerk please read the title of their privileges and non-privileges resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 4701 Sansom Street, located in the Third Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on, for consideration, on the final passes calendar at our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on the Environment to conduct a hearing to evaluate progress on the implementation of the Philly Tree Plan, determine how to expedite progress and what, if any, additional policies might promote the city's sustainable greening goals.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution can, excuse me, the next two are not privileged. And a non-privileged resolution condemning President Donald J. Trump for moving our nation closer to a constitutional crisis by likening himself to and acting like a king.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1124 South 56th Street, located in the Third Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution, this resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration at our next session of council. Clerk, please read the title of the next resolution. That's it. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Good morning. I have one non-privileged resolution today.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 623 Rear, North 55th Street, located in the Fourth Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes the Birthday Councilmember.
That's awesome. Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
You're welcome. Would a clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution, please?
A privileged resolution recognizing February 20th, 2025, as World Day of Social Justice in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ketye Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, everyone. I have no bills and resolutions today.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young.
Good morning, Mr. President. Today I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would a Chief Clerk read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of legendary Jazz host Bob Perkins.
Thank you very much. This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged, seven, one non-privileged and seven privileged resolutions to introduce.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the privileges and non-privileges resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution condemning the unconstitutional actions taken by the Department of Government Efficiency to dismantle the federal government.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and celebrating Queen Judith Robinson for her tireless advocacy, insistence on being heard, and for her work to amplify voices of communities in North Philadelphia for the benefit of the entire city of Philadelphia on the occasion of Black History Month.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar.
A resolution celebrating and commending Martha Williams for her commitment to her communities, family, and people across Philadelphia, and for her insistence on seeing the humanity of people who are incarcerated on the occasion of Black History Month.
This resolution will be placed. This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating Patricia Mama Pat Vickers for her work to love and care for people across Philadelphia, her commitment to justice, and her resolve to reduce the suffering of incarcerated people on the occasion of Black History Month.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution celebrating and recognizing Sandra Nan Hill for her relentless work to improve the lives of people around her and to recognize the dignity of every person, particularly people who are incarcerated on the occasion of Black History Month.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating Yvonne Newkirk as a pillar of her community for her relentless work to improve the lives and protect the dignity of people who are incarcerated across Pennsylvania on the occasion of Black History Month.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the life of Brenda Harris, one of the founding members of the Coalition to Abolish Death by Incarceration, C-A-D-B-I, and a black woman whose profound love for her communities improved the lives of her neighbors and people across Philadelphia on the occasion of Black History Month.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
Celebrating and honoring Lorraine Miss Dee Dee Hall for her constant pursuit of justice, her ability to speak truth to power across Philadelphia and Pennsylvania, and for her infinite, infinite love for the people and communities around her on the occasion of Black History Month.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President. God bless you. Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged and one non-privileged resolution to introduce today.
Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the privileges and non-privileges resolution, please?
A non-privileged resolution calling on Immigration and Customs Enforcement to immediately release Saraieth One Van from Mochanan Valley Processing Center, and calling on Philadelphia's members of the United States Congress to champion welcoming immigration policies in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and to recognize Philadelphia as a city of second chances, especially for formerly incarcerated non-citizens.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes, this resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution honoring the public servant at the local, state, and federal level who made the unforgettable Eagle Super Bowl Parade possible, and recognizing all public servants for their dedication to communities they serve.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes. This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Counsel be at ease. The Chair recognizes Chief Clerk.
Councilmember Gautier, you did have four resolutions. One was stuck to the other, so I'll read your privileged resolution. That was my fault. I apologize. And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on the Environment to conduct a hearing to evaluate the pro-, I thought I did, the progress on the implementation of the Philly Tree Plan to determine how to expedite progress and what, if any, additional policies might promote the city's sustainable greening goals.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes the gentleman from the Northeast, my good friend, Councilman Mike Dresko.
Morning, Mr. President. I have one privilege resolution for today.
Thank you very much. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the Tesla Science Foundation, TSF, by declaring February 24th, 2025, Tesla Science Foundation Day in the City of Philadelphia and celebrating the work of TSF in cultivating scientific innovation and advancing the legacy of Nikola Tesla in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privilege, privileged resolution on your behalf, some of all members of council.
Thank you very much, sir. Would a chief clerk read, please read the title of the privileged resolution?
And a privileged resolution calling for the preservation of the University of the Arts Hamilton Hall and Furness Hall as vital spaces for the arts in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll offer one bill.
Thank you very much. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending Section 6-503 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Licenses and Permits" to provide for the suspension of licenses for businesses not in compliance with applicable state regulations and/or whose physical layout significantly differs from the originally approved floor plan, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. Today I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would a chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
And a privileged resolution recognizing Friday, February 21st, 2025, as International Mother Language Day to honor the brave souls who, on this day in 1952, sacrificed their lives to retain the right to use their mother language, Bangla, also known as Bengali.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. I also want to take a moment, special privilege, to just say we also had in our presence today on Council, on behalf of Councilman Cindy Bass, the Gratz Bulldogs, correct? I'm sure they can hear you. Let's give our young men a round of applause. They just stepped out. Are they coming down? Okay, they'll be down to join us for a second. Just want to make sure we acknowledge our young people. We'll see them shortly.
Mr. President, I just wanted to thank you for recognizing and bringing that to light. And they are here today for winning the 2024 Public League Championship. Some future Philadelphia Eagles in the house.
Okay, I was told they'll be down here shortly, but we definitely want to acknowledge the Gratz Bulldogs. Nice town, okay?
Eighth District.
What's up? Eighth District, okay? What you got to say, Coach Thomas?
They are doing an amazing job and, you know, we're even, they are, they have inspired us to do our part to help improve that Gratz field. So know that, we know that that's the issue. We're talking about it. And when they have success, even under those conditions, it inspires us to do a little bit more. So congratulations, North Philly. Congratulations Zip and all of the amazing people over at Simon Gratz. You guys are.
Thank you, Coach Thomas. There being no reports from committees today. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions. On a second reading and final passage calendars, counsel will be at ease. Matter of fact, let me, let me, bring them on the floor for a second. Let's give these young men a round of applause, y'all. Counsel will be at ease. Give them a round of applause. Let's give them a big round of applause, y'all. These young men represent the best that our city has to offer. Counsel will be at ease. Stephane. One last round of applause for our young men. Thank you very much. I felt compelled to acknowledge our young men and put counsel at ease because oftentimes the media portray a very different light, particularly African-American young men, more than any other culture, to target in a certain type of stereotype. And so when we have the opportunity to up young, uplift young men who are in the right place, doing the right things for the right reasons, that's what it's all about. So congratulations again, Gratz Bulldogs. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 241097. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held. 240427, 240304-A, and 240665.
Thank you. Before considering the bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on a second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. Your public comment must be germane to the bills and resolutions that are on the calendar. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on the signup sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. The time limit today will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium when you are 30 seconds remaining to your time. The light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same matter. I would now ask the chief clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
Coach Jade Roan, head coach Gene Faust, Kate Perez, and Dana Lomax Biker also make their way to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Jade Roan. I'm the athletic director at Simon Gratz High School. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to come out and speak on behalf of our 3A football champions. Special shout-out to Councilwoman Bass who made all this possible. This season has been a daunting one because of the conditions that we've been working under, but our young people have truly put the hard work in and the dedication and now they sit today as champions. We definitely want to recognize their families, our schools, their coaches, who, you know, with all the stuff that we've been through with our field conditions over at Marcus Foster Stadium. Hopefully, we can get some of those things resolved and being able to play on our field next year and actually practice. We can continue to do more things. So again, thank you very much, Councilwoman Bass and City Council members at large. Thank you.
We have Kate Perez, Donna Lomax Biker, and May Sean Damon and Saleem Holbrook also make their way to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Dana Lomax Ayler, A-Y-L-E-R. Okay, that's my name. But I just wanted to congratulate some of the honor rees, which is Mama, Mama Pat, Patricia Marshall Vickers. I wanted to congratulate Ms. Yvonne Newkirk, Ms. Nan Hill, and Ms. Martha Brown. And also, how can I forget Mama Dee Dee? Mama Dee, I wanted to congratulate these ladies because the work that they do, as I say, their boots are on the ground. They're really about their life, you know, their advocacy, going above and beyond for those who are behind the walls, which a lot of people overlook, right? And judge, not even knowing their story or their history. So I just want to congratulate these ladies. I'm proud of them. I love them. And y'all keep, keep doing it, boots on the ground.
I'm Kate Perez, and on Tuesday, the Israeli occupation.
Ms. Perez.
Yeah.
Ms. Perez, so, and I understand you come down, I've been more than generous discretion-wise. It's your topic on the actual legislation put before us. And the legislation put before us is about conformities, which is a zoning matter, has nothing to do with Israel, has nothing to do with Palestine, has nothing to do with the selling of ammunition from any Philadelphia-based company. So if you're going to speak on a resolution that's put before you, that you actually signed up for, then please stick to the topic. Other than that, you will not be speaking today.
It was written as non-conforming businesses, and these businesses that continue to sell to the occupation are not conforming to international standards and moral standards.
That does not conform to the actual legislation, ma'am. And so you're more than welcome to speak on any topic that's germane to the actual resolution, and I am advised that what you're speaking on does not conform to this particular zoning matter.
Okay, I guess I'll just let you know that the Israeli occupation raided the Under School yesterday. I mean, sorry, I'll.
Ms. Perez, can you have the next speaker, please, come on and speak on the actual topic germane to what we're working on in City Council today? Would a chief clerk please call the next speaker, please?
We have Sean Damon, we have Saleem Holbrook, May Nathaniel Grimes, and Shakabuna Marshall also make their way to the podium.
Saleem Holbrook. Good morning, Council President. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to honor the late and great Ms. Brenda Harris, Mama Dee Dee, from my neighborhood, 200G, 20th and Green, 18th and Wallace, Martha Williams, Sandra Hill, Mama Pat, Ms. Patricia Vickers, and Yvonne Newkirk. You know, today, politicians, we're in a political climate where people are used to punching down on people, whether it's unhoused people, whether it's drug addicts, whether it's people suffering from mental health disabilities, lack of access to health care, people who are suffering the daily trauma of living poor or working class in the United States. These women here are people who punch up to power. These are the ones who are fighting for people who are in prison. As someone who went to Catholic school but didn't learn much, there's a verse from that I learned, and it says that, "For when I was hungry, you gave me something to eat; I was thirsty, and you gave me something to drink; I was a stranger, and you invited me in; I needed clothes, and you clothed me; I was sick, and you looked after me; I was in prison, and you came to visit me." These women live up to that, more than I've seen in this country, right? We have people who masquerade as Christians, as politicians, who abuse people, who neglect people. These women, these mamas, are fighters. You know, I'm standing here free as a result of them. There's many of us in this room who are standing free, and they're still fighting and continuing. So I really want to just stand here and honor them because they represent the fighting spirit of Philadelphia. They the real underdogs right there. So I want to, you know, from the bottom of my heart, extend my appreciation to y'all. And you know that people all over this city who are unhoused, who are suffering from police abuse, who have loved ones incarcerated, they appreciate your work too, as well as the men and women on the inside. So thank you.
Sean Damon. I'm here to speak on behalf of Lorraine Hall, known as Miss Dee Dee, Patricia Vickers, known to us as Mama Pat, Sandra Hill, also known as Nan Hill, Yvonne Newkirk, Martha Williams, and the late Brenda Harris. For decades, these women have struggled against the odds to bring their incarcerated loved ones home. They have honed their abilities. Sandra likes to remind us when we go into an important meeting that we're like the Navy SEALs, each with our own specialty. Ms. Dee Dee is a powerful public speaker. Patricia Vickers is a powerful convener, facilitating meetings week after week and keeping us on point. Martha Williams, a committed community organizer. Sandra Hill herself, a powerful writer. In fact, you all should have a booklet on your desks that are some of her sayings and her poetry. Yvonne Newkirk, a tireless volunteer for important organizations like the PA Prison Society, where she serves as a lifeline for incarcerated people and also their families, and so many more. While they all have their own unique abilities, they have one superpower in common, and that's their love. They really lead with love in this work, and that draws people to them, draws people like myself to them, to struggle alongside them in this work. And they have built organizations like the Coalition to Abolish Death by Incarceration, the Human Rights Coalition. And it's important to say that they have touched the hearts of powerful people with this love. They've met with governors, district attorneys, and of course, members of the Pennsylvania General Assembly, as well as members of Philadelphia City Council. One story I will tell is that when a man named John Fetterman was running to be the Lieutenant Governor of Pennsylvania, they met with him prior to his election. lieutenant governor of Pennsylvania, they met with him prior to his election to tell him about the Board of Pardons. Later, when he was elected, he became a champion of second chances at the board, and dozens of people came home. So these women touched the powerful with their love, and that changed the course of history. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, city council members. Special good morning to Kendra Brooks, and happy Black History Month. My name is Shakabuna Marshall, the executive director of Human Rights Coalition, and I like to honor the women of Human Rights Coalition, as well as the Coalition to Abolish Death by Incarceration, also known by the acronym of CADB. I like to applaud them for all the work they have been doing for over twenty-five years in this criminal justice reform movement. They are the mothers of the movement, and that's what I like to call them, but everyone calls them that. And they've done terrific work within this city and within the state overall. They have brought attention to the inhumane treatment and conditions of solitary confinement for people who are confined in our Philadelphia County jails, as well as our Pennsylvania Department of Corrections. They have helped out when we had the COVID epidemic within this country. They helped out with incarcerated people and got the governor to start releasing people who were nonviolent and who needed to be out. And they also brought attention to the prison oversight, independent prison oversight board that we're going to try to elect coming up soon. And we also help with voter registration for formerly incarcerated and justice-impacted people. And so with that, I'd like to applaud my mothers. Thank you. And most importantly, I'd like to applaud, I'd like to give honor and respect to my mother, my biological mother, Mama Pat, Patricia Marshall-Vickers, for all the terrific work that she's done. She's a human rights activist, she's a human rights organizer, known within the city, within the state, and across the country, and I thank you, ma'am. Peace. God bless y'all.
May we have Nathaniel Grimes, Abu Fazal, and Abu Haviis also make their way to the podium?
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here, especially to honor all these women, but in particular Mama Pat. I work with the Human Rights Coalition in my role, working on a local archive which houses letters going back for decades in and out of prisons. Mama Pat's influence is unmistakable in all of that, not only in the countless letters that she's written and answered and responded to, but equally in her less visible coordination of so many campaigns, events, and eventual victories for incarcerated people and their families. And more personally, I found my way to Mama Pat and the Human Rights Coalition during a time of extreme turbulence. And as people said, the love and community that she embodied helped me feel at home, helped encourage me to use my skills constructively, and allowed me to connect with people and causes that have become foundational for my life. So thank you. Thanks to all of you.
We have Abu Fazal, Abu Haviis. May Lynn Landis, Jeremy Blattstein, and Ashley Redfern also make their way to the podium.
Council president, esteemed members of the Philadelphia City Council, and all our honorable elected officials, leaders, and respected guests. Greetings and congratulations from the Bangladesh-American community and the people of Bangladesh. My name is Abdul Hafiz Chodri, member of the Board of Directors Bangladesh-American Community Forum of Pennsylvania, and also a proud-of-Bangladeshi-American. I am truly grateful for this opportunity to testify in support of the resolution introducing by councilmember Dr. Nina Ahmed. This resolution recognized Friday, February 21, 2025, as International Mother Language Day. A day to honor the memory of Salam Barkat Rafik Jabbar, who on this day in 1952 sacrificed their lives to protect the right to use their mother language, Bangla, also known as Bengali. The Declaration, Raastu Bhasha Bangla Chai, we demand Bangla as our state language. In November 1999, UNESCO recognized the significance of the diversity by declaring February 21 as International Mother Language Day, celebrating all mother tongues around the world. With deep respect for all languages, I would like to highlight that a special survey, as remarked, Bengali is one of the sweetest languages in the world. The mother tongue plays a circular role of equit communication and exchange to ideas and cultural identify. Thank you for your time, attention, and support. We are proud to stand with all of you today. Thank you.
We have Lynn Landis, then Jeremy Blattstein, Ashley Redfern, and then David Alexander Jenkins.
My name is Lynn Landis of SafeStreetsPhilly.org. I support Resolution 240665 restricting where mobile service providers can park in the 7th District, but it doesn't go far enough. There is an old saying, "The road to hell is paved with good intentions," and it certainly applies in this case. Mobile services can park themselves in any neighborhood for anyone to use is doing more harm than good and should be banned throughout the city, not just in certain locations in Kensington. If people need mobile services, then they should make an appointment, and a mobile service provider can come to their residence, such as with Meals on Wheels. I also wanted to take this moment, and I believe it does agree with the Sunshine Act, that this is something of concern, that there was, in the light of the numerous aircraft accidents, there was an aircraft incident at Jefferson-Hillport, which is a block from where my husband and I live. He is a former airline pilot and military pilot and was served as a safety officer.
Hey, Ms. Lynn Landis, how you doing today? I know you well--
You know what I'm doing is I'm following the Sunshine Act, which is not what you are doing.
Can you stay focused on--
When you restrict comments to the agenda items only, that's censorship.
Yes, ma'am.
Clear and strict.
Could you stay focused on the mobile services legislation--
I'll leave, but what you're doing is censoring people, and that's not allowed under--
I--
Here.
Number one.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Hello, city council, council president Johnson. How are you guys doing today? I'm gonna start this off as a BTA, BTA, BTA. The parade, resolution. All right.
Jeremy, we talking about non-conformities bill--
No, I'm talking about his resolution that actually got put up for the parade. Talking about the parade. The parade. I believe for this city, nothing is possible when we work together. Mayor Parker received a text message. Did you send a text message? Who sent the text message? The text message said that Council Act prerogative was getting ended. One of you send it. I want to know who sent the text message. I did not send it. Mayor Parker said that one of you. But I will, the last thing I will say, it related to the prison, the literacy project. My father created--
Jeremy, we talking about the legislation celebrating the Philadelphia Eagles today that was put--
I'm pivoting, sir. I'm talking about the prisons.
The prison bill?
Yes, sir. Honoring the people coming out of prisons. Can I talk about that?
Yes, you can.
We're on, I like the short leash, though, today. I appreciate that because there was a parade that was very sad that happened. So I really want everyone to understand that as well, right? Of dead babies and children throughout Gaza. So that's very sad that happened yesterday. But my father started the prison literacy project at Graterford Prison. So today really was very moving, and I really appreciate the work that each, every one of you are doing in the prisons because it's really dear to my heart that everybody deserves dignity, even if they're incarcerated. And raise your hand if you rode SEPTA to City Hall or in the last week. Anybody? Anybody from council? Did you ride SEPTA? Oh, Councilman Rourke, you ride SEPTA? Yeah, we love to see it. I thanks. I got cut off. We got a little bit of back and forth, but hey, thank you very much, and go, birds.
We have Ashley Redfern, David Alexander Jenkins, and then Mamuti Ajamu Azaboro also make their way to the podium.
Hi, good morning, esteemed members of city council, community members, education and innovation enthusiasts. I'm Ashley Redfern, proud CEO of American Paradigm Schools, and also the volunteer education director for the Tesla Science Foundation. Today, I'm here with my colleagues to express our strong support for the Declaration of February 24th as Nipla-Tesla Science Foundation Day in Philadelphia. Tesla Science Foundation participates in community science events where our volunteers have participated at Tacony Academy Charter School, School of Rock in Philadelphia, the Franklin Institute, Fourth on Fourth Street in Historic Fabric Row, and the Ethical Society of Philadelphia. Why February 24th? In 1893, Nikola Tesla delivered a groundbreaking lecture at the Franklin Institute, where he introduced the principles of alternating current, the induction motor, and the concept of wireless energy transmission. His visionary ideas transformed the way electricity is harnessed and used. To prepare for the shift in the science standards, our educators have been collaborating through the Pennsylvania Science Leader Network with public charter, parochial, and other educators to prepare for the shift in the science standards and be ready for the science, technology, engineering, environmental literacy, and sustainability standards. Nikola Tesla inspires us because he was not only an inventor, a visionary, but because he also stood by the moral premise that we are to invent and innovate for the good of humanity. He continues to be an inspiration for us at the Tesla Science Foundation, and also at American Paradigm Schools, and particularly at Tacony Academy, which has a specific mission and vision on intervention, innovation, and problem solving. Thank you for your time and attention today, scientifically yours.
Mr. President, I rise in favor of Bill 240304-A. Despite my sometimes uncanny resemblance to the famous character from the drama series P. Valley, I am actually David Alexander Jenkins, and I underscore this for the many black markers and outstretched palms that asked me to sign as I came into chambers this morning. You see, the truth is that beyond the beloved character and my shared outlook on the role of citizen, which he describes as a housemother, and if such thing can be sort of condensed into the word, "One who looks out for the discarded, rejected, and the oft forgotten." An important distinction between us and his Rule 29,763, you ought to be careful who you let into the door in case you can't save every single, I'm not going to say that word. It is my belief that there is a door for everyone, which should and must include an effort to protect even those whom we are oft too comfortable leaving behind. The mayor has announced a valiant effort to provide 30,000 affordable homes to the real estate offerings in Philadelphia, and I am beyond proud of this renewed focus on housing our brothers and sisters in need. Certainly, the work of Councilman Young, Squilla, and Harity will help to ensure that Title IV codes concerning building, construction, and occupancy are met with an amendment which require proof of insurance and certificates for those who will come to participate in this effort. But I ask the body to consider focusing cleanly on occupancy, or the intended use of a building categorized by the type of people who will occupy it. That in lockstep with regulating who will envision and create these 30,000 units, that a space be made for the 5,000 citizens who make the streets of Philadelphia their home. That we prioritize making use of the 5,000-plus buildings currently in our land bank in collaboration with decarbonization efforts, and finally, that we work to keep people in their homes as mightily as we erect anew places for displaced citizens in Philadelphia.
We have Muti Ajamu Azaboro, Mayo Bona Hagens, and Keith Crippen also make their way to the podium.
Check one. I'm General Muti Ajamu Saburu. General is my title. Muti Ajamu Saburu is my name, and I'm from the great state of North Philadelphia, city of Richard Allen. I'm here to talk about bill or resolution, it's a bill, actually, 240304A, and it's introduced by councilmember Young, Squilla, and Harity.
Squilla.
Squilla. Thank you for the correction. Matter of fact, magnificent rising to you, Mr. President, and to this august body. It talks about ordinance and amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, Title IV of the Philadelphia Code, which is really my focus, the building, construction, and occupancy code. Just off the top of my dome, the language is too cryptic. I would suggest to this body that when you put out things of this nature, you make it so the average Jane and John Q. public can understand it. There are some things, it's almost as if it was either written by a lawyer or somebody who consulted--
He is a lawyer.
Why did I not know that? And they don't do us service in terms of educating the public. That's why we have a problem with gentrification in this city. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact, apologize, to councilmember Rue Landau, because I forgot to mention her when I mentioned those five beautiful stars, that Pentagon star that represents light in this fiscal dark time. They represent our guide, the way out. So unfortunately, I've run over my time as usual, but as always, it's an absolute pleasure.
And also, just for the record, when you get a chance, probably after council, I just encourage you to have a conversation with the gentleman, Councilman Young, who will actually give you an overview of what the bill actually stands for in layman's terms, if that's okay with you.
Will do, absolutely.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Bona Hagens, fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor. I'd like to send congratulations to the Simon Grass High School football team on winning the 2024 Public League Championship for their resilience and excellence are undeniable. They worked hard, and they followed the rules. But honoring these young champions, celebrating their discipline and commitment, and while defying federal law by maintaining sanctuary city status. Congratulations to Simon Grass football team. I wonder, did you bother to mention to them that funding for their education and future will be cut because you're more focused on protecting people who aren't even here legally? Congratulations to the Simon Grass football team. Six out of 10 high school graduates in this city can't read, they can't write, and they can't do math on a high school level, but you're busy funneling resources elsewhere. Congratulations to the Simon Grass football team. Is that your idea of leadership, giving these young men a citation while quietly preparing them to suffer the consequences of your choices? City council, what are you going to do? Congratulations to the Simon Grass football team. Because these-- Because these young champions deserve more than just empty praise and hollow gestures. They deserve the same resources and opportunities that you've handed to others. Congratulations to the Simon Grass Football Team. And six out of 10, they won't be able to read, write, or do math when they graduate, but congratulations to the Simon Grass Football Team. Bona Hagens, unseated council president, over and out.
Please call the next person.
Keith Crippen.
Clerk, please call the next person for public comment.
Good morning, everybody. How's everybody doing? I'd like to, first of all, say my name. My name is Keith Crippen, and we want to say thank you and gracious for the Grass Football Team. But our company, we specialize in the greatest after-school programs ever that is not sports. And I think one of the things that really makes a difference is the arts and the schools, if we can have them. So we're trying to do with the point of getting the other kids that are not in sports being part of our greatest after-school programs ever to be part of a school. So we want to come into the schools to be, put this event on. And it's called Battle of the Fashion Scenes, that we would love to be part of the schools. No, I wasn't done. Well, I just want to say right now, it's just to the point that we just need more after-school programs in the schools, and I just want to be clear with that. Because after we play football, after we do track, after we do cheerleading, you still got 1,600 other students left. So if we can get stuff like that going on, maybe we could stop all the stuff that might be happening in the school to calm down because we took it to a whole different level like they do sports. Sports is at a whole different level that we can't even understand how high it is because when you get to a certain part of your time of being in a school, you become a prodigy. And once you become a prodigy, everything changes. Why can't a person play in the flute? Why can't they be part of a prodigy? Why can't a person play the piano? Why can't they become a prodigy? Because it hasn't got to that level yet, and nobody conceded to put it to a level. So we need to be able to do something like that. So I'm just going, my last thing before I say, we were coming up with an event called Battle of the Fashion Scenes. It's 64 high schools, eight high schools in each city. If they win their preliminary in their city, they come to Philadelphia, the championship will be at the Wells Fargo Center. First prize is $20,000, a cater party at this school, and all the winners receive championship rings, just like they play in basketball or football. I'm just saying like this.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you.
Council President, there are no further members for public comment.
Thank you very much. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 241097?
A resolution honoring the Simon Grass High School Football Team for winning the 2024 Public League Championship and celebrating their resilience and excellence introduced by Councilmember Bass.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for motion regarding Resolution Number 241097.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the Resolution Number 241097 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution commending and recognizing NFL Hall of Famer Merrill Reese for his nearly 50-year career as the voice of the Philadelphia Eagles and his exceptional contributions to broadcasting in sports, introduced by Councilmember Phillips on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Council President Johnson, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Recognizing February 20th, 2025 as World Day of Social Justice in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Landau.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of legendary jazz host Bob Perkins, introduced by Councilmember Young.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing and celebrating Queen Judith Robinson for her tireless advocacy, insistence on being heard, and for her work to amplify voices of communities in North Philadelphia for the benefit of the entire city of Philadelphia on the occasion of Black History Month.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
Adoption of the resolution.
Second. It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on the Environment to conduct a hearing to evaluate progress on the implementation of the Philly Tree Plan, determine how to expedite progress, and what, if any, additional policies might promote the city's sustainable greening goals, introduced by Councilmember Gautier.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gautier for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution celebrating and commending Martha Williams for her commitment to her communities, family, and people across Philadelphia, and for her insistence on seeing the humanity of people who are incarcerated on the occasion of Black History Month, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and celebrating Patricia Mama Pat Vickers for her work to love and care for people across Philadelphia, her commitment to justice, and her resolve to reduce the suffering of incarcerated people on the occasion of Black History Month, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution celebrating and recognizing Sandra Nann Hill for her relentless work to improve the lives of people around her and to recognize the dignity of every person, particularly people who are incarcerated on the occasion of Black History Month, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and celebrating Yvonne Newkirk as a pillar of her community for her relentless work to improve the lives and protect the dignity of people who are incarcerated across Pennsylvania on the occasion of Black History Month, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the life of Brenda Harris, one of the founding members of the Coalition to Abolish Death by Incarceration, CADBI, and a Black woman whose profound love of her communities improved the lives of her neighbors and people across Philadelphia on the occasion of Black History Month, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution celebrating and honoring Lorraine Miss Dee Dee Hall for her constant pursuit of justice, her ability to speak truth to power across Philadelphia and Pennsylvania, and for her infinite love for the people and communities around her on the occasion of Black History Month, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the public servants at the local, state, and federal level who made the unforgettable Eagles Super Bowl Parade possible and recognizing all public servants for their dedication to the communities they serve, introduced by Councilmember O'Rourke.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke for motion on the resolution.
Option of the resolution?
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the Tesla Science Foundation, TSF, by declaring February 24th, 2025, Tesla Science Foundation Day in the city of Philadelphia, celebrating the work of TSF in cultivating scientific innovation and advancing the legacy of Nikola Tesla in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Driscoll.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll for motion on the resolution.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution calling for the preservation of the University of the Arts, Hamilton Hall, and Fairness Hall as vital spaces for the arts in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Squilla on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Friday, February 21st, 2025, as International Mother Language Day to honor the brave souls who, on this day in 1952, sacrificed their lives to retain the right to use their mother language, Bangla, also known as Bengali, introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ahmad for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property, second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Council President, there are no further resolutions in my possession.
That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to all my colleagues who joined me today in wearing a pin or African attire to celebrate Black History Month. As I mentioned before, for me, Black History Month is just not about famous Black Americans of the past. It's about the history that is being made right now in our neighborhoods. It's about the unsung heroes that are putting in work every day to make our community stronger. This week, I'm honoring Black women who are leading our fight against mass incarceration through their work in the Coalition to End Death by Incarceration, or CABE. They are mothers and family members of people who are incarcerated, and they have been dedicated, they have dedicated their lives to freedom, not just the ones of their loved ones, but for all of us. So today, as part of our celebration for Black History Month, we are honoring six heroes: Miss Yvonne Newkirk, Miss Sandra Nann Hill, Miss Patricia Mama Pat Vickers, Miss Martha Williams, Miss Dee Dee, Miss Lorraine Hall, and Miss Brenda Harris. Each of you also received a copy of The Sayings by Nann Hill, a book by Nann, one of our heroes that we recommended today. I love this book. I met Nann at, well, I've seen her several times, but I was given this book at a holiday celebration, and I took it home and read it, and I was like, oh, wow, this is very moving. So I wanted to make sure that we honored her, and that's how this all came about, about honoring the women in the decarceration movement. I also introduced a resolution to honor another North Philadelphia activist, Queen Judith Robinson. She is a Black woman from North Philadelphia who is unapologetic about standing up for our people and our communities. She's been in this room many, many times over the years, insisting that City Council listen and take action to expand opportunities for housing. So I'm glad to have the opportunity to recognize her work and her spirit as an active citizen today. I saw her in the audience. Today, I also passed a resolution condemning unconstitutional actions of the so-called Department of Government Efficiency, or Dodge. This is not a legitimate body. It was created without the approval of Congress by its leader Elon Musk and has not been confirmed by the Senate. The billionaires who now run Washington created Dodge in order to destroy anything that stands in the way of them gaining more wealth and more power. Civil servants here in Philadelphia have already lost their jobs, and cuts to services will soon follow. At the VA Hospital, at the Independent Park, and at our city's universities and hospital, the federal government is the second-largest employer in Philadelphia, and federal cuts by Dodge would cost thousands of jobs and $200 million in funding for our city. This will impact small business, service sector jobs, tourism, especially as we head towards our celebration of the 250 years of independence. This right here is unprecedented, is unconstitutional, and unacceptable. Thank you so much.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is another word from the minority today, and that word is servants. Today, I introduced a resolution honoring local, state, and federal public servants who made the Eagles' Victory Super Bowl Parade possible. I want to, and I wanted to recognize it with a resolution for, I think, what many of us witnessed on that day. Valentine's, the V-Day, really. Victory and Valentine's. A million people, I was up there with most of my colleagues on top of the bus. We had us a good old time. I think I still got a shot of fireball somebody rocked at my head. Million people, right? We saw and witnessed that from the sportsplex all the way to the steps of the art museum. A million people in the height of polarized times on one accord. I've been, yeah. I have been wrestling since the spring through the summer, and my staff would tell you the same, with the question of how we become a people, how we become a community in these times. I think that the parade, the victory parade, was a living sermon on what actually constitutes a community, what actually constitutes, makes for, a people. St. Augustine, who is the father of the Western Church, wrote in a book called The City of God, in the nineteenth book, that when it comes to defining a people, that the common object, that what makes them a people, is what they love. That the common object of their love is what makes them a people. Central to realizing an actual common life together, to realizing beloved community, is love. It's so simple, we would trip over it looking for something complicated. Just love. I would, that we would allow ourselves to relish in that moment, to not move too, too, too quickly past the miracle of what we saw last Friday throughout this city that literally has the word "love" baked into its name, that we wouldn't move too fast. has the word "love" baked into its name, that we wouldn't move too fast, we would relish that because I certainly believe that we could use more of them in this time and let Philadelphia be the trendsetter it's always been on how we ought to live and become and be a people. Go Birds! But beyond this event, the resolution also recognizes the tireless dedication of all public servants to the communities that they serve. More than three thousand workers across all city departments, along with state and federal partners, put in long hours to ensure the parade was a safe and a joyous celebration for all Philadelphians and neighbors. Septa conductors, bus drivers, staff played a vital role in transporting thousands of fans safely into the city and back home after the event. Crews from the Departments of Streets and Sanitation worked for days in advance. Y'all saw the barricades going up almost at the day of the Super Bowl to prepare for the parade and continue their efforts from early Saturday morning until late at night, ensuring the streets were cleared of trash and debris. Fire department medics provided emergency assistance, including lifesaving care, y'all know that, to two individuals who suffered gunshot wounds near the roadway. The P P D, the Philadelphia Police Department, worked quickly to ensure people in the area and other paradegoers were actually safe. Public servants do crucial work, ensuring that essential services function smoothly. And we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge that under the Trump administration, the Trump-Musk administration, that their work has been repeatedly undermined by reckless efforts to shrink the federal government, cuts to critical agencies, attacks on labor protections, et cetera, weaken the ability of public servants, all of us, to do our jobs effectively. These actions don't just harm government workers, they directly impact working-class, working-poor Philadelphians who rely on public services every single day. So it's critical to recognize, to support, and protect the work of public servants, not just in moments of celebration, but every single day, because our communities depend on them. Public servants should not only be appreciated, but they should be supported, protected, and invested in. But because we're seeing the exact opposite in Washington today, I wanted to say to the federal workers in Philly, know that we see you. Leader Brooks has already mentioned this, we were together last night, I want to just echo that as well, and we want to support you as the world's richest idiots mess with the conditions of your labor. And as awful as this situation is, I want to echo A F G E's leadership in saying, please, if you can, y'all, hold the line. The President and his co-president are trying to chase you out for a reason, but what we have learned on last Friday, on V-Day, Valentine's and Victory, together we're more powerful than you may feel right now. Please don't forget that, remember that. Thank you, glory to God and power to people.
The Chair recognizes, any speeches on behalf of the majority? The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. First, I offer a happy birthday to our colleague, Rue Landau. It's wonderful to have a birthday on an actual council session, so happy birthday to you. Again, Mr. President, today I rise in support of and in solidarity with my sister, our sister, our collective community sister, Chef Kiara, who's the owner of Chubby Chicks. It's located at eleven-eleven Walnut Street here in Center City, Philadelphia. It's in the district of our colleague, Councilmember Mark Squillaw, and I want to thank Councilmember Squillaw, who was on the phone with me late on Sunday night, offering his help and support to Chef Kiara after seeing the post from Dr. Athia, who by the way, is our National Coalition of One Hundred Black Women, Pennsylvania Chapter Sister. After she shared her now-viral post over the weekend, we now know where we are. And I want to thank you, Council President, for taking time out of your very busy schedule to visit and support Chef Kiara yesterday. I want to thank our colleagues across this body and also in the State House, some of our commissioners, I know Chairman Sabir was there, and also State Representative Amen Brown. And I want to thank all of, not only the elected officials, but fellow Philadelphians and those across the region who have offered their love and support for Chef Kiara. In times like these, it's imperative for us as leaders in this city to stand up for what is right, particularly for a small business owner, and we'll say particularly for someone who is a historically disadvantaged business owner who is investing in our city. She's making a positive impact in our community, she's employing people, and she's just trying to do the right thing. I was deeply disturbed and disheartened after listening to what she has endured at eleven-eleven Walnut Street. Harassment, intimidation, and just purity ignorance. And she's endured all of that while seeking to operate her business that she moved from Blackwood, New Jersey, here to downtown Philadelphia. No one should have to endure the type of behavior that she has endured. No one should have to deal with individuals placing dead rodents and vermin outside of their business, trying to dissuade others from patronizing her business. No one should have to deal with concocted bad reviews, seeking to get individuals not to patronize her business. She should not have to deal with the things that she has dealt with here in our city. So I rise today in support of Chef Kiara, in support of Chubby Chicks, in support of all of the black women across the city of Philadelphia who are working hard and who are business owners and doing the very best that they can with what they have. And so today, colleagues, I had the opportunity to go buy Chubby Chicks at eight o'clock this morning, and I did order something nice for every single member of Philadelphia City Council. And it's being freshly made for each of you, and upon its completion will be delivered to each of your offices. And I want to be clear for the record, I paid for it. It was not a gift, but it is a gift to you, my colleagues of Philadelphia City Council, in support of Chubby Chicks and Chef Kiara. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I think the bright spot in this whole situation, you know, a book I read that says, "He'll make your enemies your footstool," and now she has so much business, it's so overwhelming, that they can't even keep up with the crowds and crowds of people showing up. And so I told the young lady in the staff just to keep her head up and continue to keep moving forward. The Chair recognizes Majority Whip Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. I just want to take a moment to first and foremost invite all of my colleagues, as well as everybody in the listening public, to the championship games this weekend. We had an opportunity to celebrate Gratz winning one of our football championships. If you don't know, there are six classifications in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as it relates to interscholastic athletics, and they were able to win one of our classification championships. This weekend, we have our Catholic League and Public League Championships for...
Is it Roman?
Yep, Roman Catholic is one of the teams, and I don't really want to give them a shout-out, but I guess I just did.
Who is Roman playing?
Roman is playing against Judge in the Catholic League Championship.
Oh, the Judge guys, okay, in the north.
And Emoltep is playing against Fells, and it's Fells' first time in the Public League Championships, so congratulations to them. That's on the boys' side. There's boys' and girls' championships happening this weekend. Both, all games will be on Sunday. I'm encouraging everybody to come out this weekend and support our student athletes, both in the Catholic League and in the Public League, but especially in the Public League. The Public League Championship Games hasn't had the attendance that we know that those young people essentially deserve, and both of those games are going to be taking place at La Salle University. So anybody that's available, I will push folks and encourage folks to come out and support our student athletes. Also want to say thank you to everybody, including you, Council President, who supported our Vision Zero hearing that happened earlier this week. If you don't know, City Council has been laser-sharp focused on issues related to transportation, traveling, whether it's septa, like the advocacy that we hear on a consistent basis, or pedestrians, cyclists, people who drive, whatever your option of traveling is, we want to make sure that you can do it and do it in a responsible and safe way. So I appreciate everybody's support with the Vision Zero hearing, and I look forward to getting a lot more questions answered when we transition into budget and budget negotiations over the next couple of months. Thank you, Council President, thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership on that. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce a bill that takes one more step towards my commitment to keeping our neighborhoods safe, healthy, and thriving. We all know that strong communities are built on mutual respect and responsibility, and that includes the responsibility of local businesses to operate in a way that supports, not harms, the neighborhoods in which they serve. Last night, we hosted a community meeting to hear directly from the people impacted by yet another business that threatens to become a nuisance and impact their quality of life. This business opened up with no license, no permits, and no certificate of occupancy. They sell loose cigarettes, they're a block away from a school, and two doors down from a daycare. They have exposed wires and radiator pipes, and it was freezing inside. The nuisance police officers, L and I, and the District Attorney's Office, and other city workers showed up at the community meeting to answer questions, but the owners of the establishment never came, even though they said they would. So at the end of the meeting, our meeting, we went there, and we shared our concerns about businesses disregarding safety regulations, changing their operations without approval, and putting our families and neighborhoods at risk. Your voices made it clear, we need stronger tools to address these issues head-on. And that's why we introduced a new ordinance to amend Section six-dash-five-oh-three of the Philadelphia Code. This bill gives a city the authority to suspend, revoke, or deny the renewal of licenses for businesses that fail to comply with state regulations like cigarette sales, or that make significant unauthorized changes to their floor plans, which is essentially without any permits. These rules are in place to ensure public safety, and businesses that choose to ignore them cannot be allowed to put our communities in harm's way. This isn't about punishing businesses that play by the rules, it's about holding accountable those that don't. When businesses operate responsibly, we all benefit. Our streets are safer, our neighborhoods are stronger, and trust between residents and local establishment grows. I want to thank everyone who came out to our meeting last night on O'Gonce Avenue and shared their stories and ideas. Your input has been invaluable in shaping this legislation, and together, we can ensure that Philadelphia remains a city where businesses are partners in progress and not sources of danger. We want good businesses in our communities, and our businesses, we need businesses in our community because we need the revenue here in the city of Philadelphia. And, Mr. President, I just wanted to make a mention that the business that I'm referring to, when they opened up, they opened up missing almost all of the things that were required to open a business. Again, no license to operate, no permits to do the work that was done, no cigarette-tobacco license, selling fake cigarettes that can make people sick, selling other tobacco products without any license, selling drug paraphernalia such as crack pipes, bongs, mini propane lighters to cook, scales to weigh, there was no tax licensing, et cetera, no heat as radiators were removed, no also wires were just exposed and dangerous, and all while operating twenty-four-seven, and two doors down from a daycare and down the street from an elementary school, and with a drug rehabilitation facility nearby. Totally, totally, totally unacceptable. And so we went online and we posted live last night, and I have to say, I was quite surprised at the number of people who felt like operating in this manner was absolutely acceptable and appropriate in our communities. And so for those people, I only have to say that we're going to do this, and we're going to do more of it, and that people cannot operate in our communities in any old way that they feel like they've been able to do in the past, that people are sick and tired of being sick and tired of the way they operate and the influence that they draw, the types of folks that they draw in, and the foolishness that they draw in to our communities. And so this was stop one, but you'll be hearing more. Thank you, Mr. President.
Remember, Bass, you've been very consistent on this issue, about at least thirteen years, consistently addressing nuisance establishments that pretty much prey on black and brown communities. Thank you for your leadership. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Jamie Glattey.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I introduced a resolution condemning President Donald Trump for likening himself to a king. Yesterday, President Trump said the quiet part out loud when he referred to himself as the "King of the United States of America" and posted an illustration of himself wearing a crown. A president's words matter. Even if he later tries to play this off as a joke, isn't funny. Rather, it is abnormal, it is inappropriate, and it is outright dangerous, and people need to hear this from their elected officials. During his first month in office, Trump proved through his actions that he truly considers himself our monarch, not our president. Trump tried to unilaterally eradicate our constitutional right to birthright citizenship. Trump tried to shutter federal agencies and programs mandated into law by Congress, and Trump declared that he is above the law. America once had a king, but almost two-hundred-and-fifty years ago, here in Philadelphia, we freed our nation from a monarch's tyranny and fought for the modern world's first government for the people, by the people. For about two-hundred-and-fifty years, every single president has dutifully upheld this norm, protecting the separation of powers and reaffirming that there is no king of America. By betraying his oath to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution, Trump moves us closer to tyranny than we have ever been since seventeen-seventy-six. I generally try not to inject federal politics into this chamber, but as the place where the Constitution was ratified, the city of Philadelphia has a responsibility to condemn this tyrannical assault on our Constitution and reaffirm how treacherous it is for the President of the United States to refer to himself as a king. We won't stand for it. Thank you so much.
For the record, I am the president of the city council, but I know I work for all of you, so no crowns over here. Thank, thank, good job. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Dr. Nina Ahmad.
Thank you, Council President. I am so pleased and honored that I work with this body, that every time we meet, are standing up for those who don't have their voices heard. So I am grateful to be here, and thank you to this body for endorsing the resolution that I passed today and we adopted it today. And this resolution was recognizing February twenty-first as International Mother Language Day. And before I go further, I want to acknowledge our amazing intern, Nushat Tajrin, who's sitting behind me, please stand up, who actually did a lot of research and put this resolution together. She is a senior at Temple University, majoring in public health, and we are very happy to have her in our office, thanks to your, you know, allowing us to have two interns. So thank you, Council President, for that. But I just wanted to briefly talk about why this is such an important issue that I brought up as a resolution, because on this day in nineteen-fifty-two, activists in where I'm from, which is now called the country of Bangladesh, sacrificed their lives during the Bengali language movement to safeguard rights to use their mother language, Bangla, also known as Bengali. These were four medical students who lost their life that day, and ever since that, we have been commemorating that day. And I remember as a child, waking up at the crack of, you know, just before twelve, walking with thousands of people in the city towards a monument that was built for them to remember what the sacrifice was. And that sacrifice actually was the impetus for the independence of Bangladesh. That was the start of working for that. So from fifty-two to nineteen-seventy-one, it took that long for people to fight to actually have independence. So that is why this is such a critical, you know, issue for me particularly. So that is why this is such a critical, you know, issue for me particularly, and all those from my community who live in this country. I also want to acknowledge Mr. Abdul Fazal, who's the Director of International Center for Mother Language here in Pennsylvania. He actually has a replica of the monument that was put up in Bangladesh, and that is called Shahid Minar, where everybody walks to. And we have one of those right here in Pennsylvania, right outside Philadelphia, that Mr. Abdul Fazal, every 21st. In fact, tonight, people will be gathering before 12 to go to that monument and commemorate this day. I also want to thank Mr. Abdul Hafiz Chowdhury, who testified today. He's from the Bangladesh-American Community Forum of Pennsylvania, and many others who are here. Because we want to underscore that language is vital for communication, and is also a source of pride, especially connecting individuals to their roots and heritage. Language is crucial for growth and prosperity of our human society because it allows people to communicate, foster connections, and create a sense of community. International Mother Language Day and Al-Sayyidin Bangla Matribhasha Day raises awareness about the importance of preserving linguistic diversity, developing good citizenship, social justice, and equal access to education for all, and advocating for multilingualism to foster success. And I wanted to just talk about the connections, what we are seeing now, at a time in our country here that I call home, we're at crossroads with so much destabilization underway. And I look at the struggles of different societies and countries who have fought against injustice and evil, you know, that's all I can call it, and have prevailed, sometimes at great cost, but prevailed nonetheless. And today is a commemoration of that struggle of people far away in a land far away from here, but the sentiment of fighting for your mother tongue, fighting for your rights, is what we are really commemorating today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleagues today for passing a resolution honoring the life of jazz radio legend Bob Perkins. My father loved jazz, so I try to, you know, bring, shed light to that community as much as I can to honor, you know, my father's legacy as well. Last night, we held a meeting at Little Flower in the Hunting Park community to discuss zoning. It was a very well-attended meeting where community members, some were introduced to zoning for the first time, others had some knowledge of it, but we want to make sure communities members understand what zoning is and how it affects your life. In that same neighborhood, in that same building, on March 12th and April 16th, there will be follow-ups to those zoning meetings as we plan to remap the 5th District portion of the Hunting Park community. So I look forward to seeing the community residents at those meetings again.
As a point of information, remember, Young, could you just clarify to the greater public what remapping means?
Remapping is a process where we go about to correct or change the underlying base zoning districts of communities. Sometimes, there is a use that doesn't match what the zoning, what the base zoning district is, and so what we're doing is we're going, looking throughout the neighborhoods to see what type of corrective actions need to be taken in order to make sure that the zoning matches the actual uses that are there in the community, and also to look forward to the future to see what uses that community would like to see in the future as well.
You're having community meetings, including the community, about that process, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. At this very moment, as we speak, there's a record-clearing clinic sponsored by the Office of Reentry Partnerships and Net Community Care, Kua 7, at the Hank Gather's Recreation Center at 2501 Diamond Street. So if anyone who's listening, you can go to that particular rec center right now to get information on record clearing. They'll be there until 1:00 P.M. Also tonight, there's a community meeting hosted by the Water Department at 12th and Cambria Rec Center to talk about storm water infrastructure systems there. So if anyone in the 12th and Cambria area would like to go to a community meeting tonight where the Water Department will be there, they'll be there to answer all your questions about water infrastructure. This Saturday, there's a Black History Month celebration hosted by a community activist, Denise Ripley, at the Columbia North YMCA. That will take place from 2:30 to 7:00 P.M. So if you're in that area, you would like to celebrate Black History with community members, that'll be a great location to go to. Tomorrow, in the Hunting Park neighborhood as well, North 10, which is a community center, will hold a skate party in honor of the legacy of the former Carmen Garden skating rink in North Philly, and that'll be from 6:00 to 10:00 tomorrow evening. That's where I'll be tomorrow evening. And also tomorrow evening, Nomo Foundation North, located at 925 North Broad Street, will be hosting a parent cafe from 6:00 to 7:00 P.M. On Monday, there's a Black History Month Job Fair at Temple University's Howard Giddes Student Center at 13th and Montgomery that is sponsored by Temple University and the Urban League of Philadelphia. So there are a lot of events happening, a lot of things happening in North Philadelphia, in the 5th Council District, and I want to be able to continue to be a resource to my community in offering the things that are happening. But last, but certainly not least, Mr. President, this Saturday is actually my son's 7th birthday, so I want to wish a happy 7th birthday to Parker. But even more important than that, Parker's great-grandmother, my grandmama-in-law, Grandma Jenny, she listens to City Council faithfully every Thursday on WIRD, and tomorrow, she turns 90 years old, so happy birthday, Grandma Jenny. Look forward to seeing you this weekend. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. You said mother-in-law, correct? Grandmother-in-law? In-law? Smart man. Happy birthday. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Katsi Lizada.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to also begin by saying thank you to all of our public servants who made sure that on Friday, the parade was amazing. I think their commitment to making sure that we received guests from all parts of the U.S., their pre and post preparations were an amazing sight. It was actually overwhelming to me. I want to say thank you to Councilmember Warwick, who made the experience much more enjoyable with all his craziness. You saw a different side of Councilmember Warwick on Friday, and so I was, I appreciate being able to have experienced that with all of you, all of my colleagues. I also want to make sure that all of you took note of the two flyers that are on your desk around two special committee hearings that we're going to hold in Kensington, the 26th and the 27th. Both of them are an opportunity for us to continue to hear from the administration and from the different departments, the work that they're actually doing to ensure that we restore quality of life in the 7th Council District. I've been holding different community hearings, as well as stakeholder hearings around the services that come into the 7th Council District by mobile providers. I know that there are some questions. I want to make sure that if you have questions, that you please reach out to myself directly or to my legislative team. We are being very intentional about making sure that we hold this bill until everyone is comfortable with it. We recognize that not everyone is going to get what they want in this process. We know that mobile services are absolutely necessary in this community, but we need to make sure that we don't provide those services in a way that continues to hurt quality of life in the 7th Council District, specifically for the children that are being raised in that community. And so we are continuing to work with the administration, with those stakeholders, with the businesses along the commercial corridors and in the immediate area where those services are provided, and we're working with those experts in the field to make sure that we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's. Diversion programs are a part of the work that happens in that community, but there are so many that we don't know exactly how they're being provided, how beneficial they are, how they cross over. So these hearings will give us an opportunity to hear from the administration about what they've done thus far and how we're going to continue to move forward, as well as how these diversion programs actually benefit those who are receiving the services. I invite you to participate, submit questions to us if you can't be at the hearings but would like to know more about what is happening. Thank you very much, Council President.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips. Would you like to, your light turned off. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to speak very briefly about Alany today. Recently in the news, there was an article in Inquirer about something I've been advocating for the past year or so around, which is rebuilding the Alany Field at Alany High School. It is unfortunate that in Alany, for years, this field has been, I mean, completely left with no development. And for me, I have made it a priority to visit every school in our district, and at every school that I've visited, I learned something about the needs of the school, but also some of the great things that are happening at the school. And this particular high school has amazing sports. They also have amazing clubs and activities that utilize this space often, and there's no running water near the field. The field, it has holes in it, the bleachers are condemned, so people can't even sit and watch their children play, and the young men and women have to use the bathroom somewhere behind the bleachers, right? There's no bathrooms near the field. And so we are at a state in our city where we need to be able to look at not only the school facility, but also the fields as well, because the fields are an opportunity for the children and also the community to use. So I've been in talks with the district for the past year about making this a big capital project in our area, along with working with Chairman Thomas to advocate for other fields across the city to be renovated as well. So we're looking forward to seeing that being discussed in the budget hearing. And also, just on the same lines, we're going to, I also made it a priority to visit doors and also canvass neighborhoods. And so on that lines, I'm having a meet and greet in the 42nd Ward for the five divisions that I represent in that ward on Monday, February 24th, at the Xylee Playground. It's going to be from 6:00 to 7:00 P.M. It's going to meet and greet your local council member, and that is, of course, myself that represents them. But I'm looking forward to connecting with them at 6:00 to 7:00 P.M. at Xylee Playground, which is located at 200 East Alany Avenue, and that's the 42nd Ward Divisions 15, 18, 19, 24, and 25. So if you live in that area, come check me out and share your concerns, share ideas, and let's meet each other. All right? Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rulandau.
Thank you, Council President. Something happened with my button, too, so I might be last, but no, I'm still.
You're not last.
Okay. So, thank you so much. Today, as we come together to recognize World Social Justice Day, a day dedicated to the pursuit of fairness, dignity, and equity, I'd like to call on this legislative body to continue to champion the rights of every Philadelphian, to protect our most vulnerable, and to foster a society where justice is not just an ideal, but a daily reality. We must ensure that every voice, regardless of who they are, their race, where they were born, their sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, anything about their background, every single person is heard and respected. The resolution I introduce today is a call to action, reinforcing our city's dedication to a more just and compassionate society. I'd like to take one special moment to shout out to people who served on the Philadelphia Commission on Human Relations while I was there as Executive Director, Marshall Freeman and Siddiq Jabbar Gardner. It was great to see you here today in this body. But today is not just any day, it's a day of celebration for justice, for project, for progress, and yes, for me and my identical twin sister Suzanne, as we mark another year around the sun, and Suzanne is watching right now.
Hey, Suzanne.
Hey, Suzanne. Love you, Suze. Happy birthday. And in that spirit, I'm seizing this moment for what I'd like to call Ru's Birthday Rant. These past, and I'm joining in the chorus of so many other colleagues today who have had beautiful rants. This is the perfect forum. These past two months under President Donald Trump have not only rattled the very foundations of our federal institutions, they've targeted the most vulnerable communities we strive so hard to protect. It's no secret that his administration's barrage of executive orders seemed designed to gut the federal government's crucial services and workers, harming especially those who need it most. And the influence of Elon Musk's Doge has fueled these bewildering decisions. We're up against bizarre, unaccountable antics that undermine the very principles we hold dear. And it's happening at the hands of two billionaires who are completely out of touch, or worse, who simply don't care about the livelihoods of working people in Philadelphia and around the country. I'm proud of the vibrant and beautiful communities that make up Philadelphia, and as a proud member of the LGBTQ queer community, I can say we are deeply concerned about what is going on today. I've heard from so many people who are terrified about what Trump's second term means for LGBTQ people across the country. I know many in this room have similar concerns as I do, and our concerns extend far beyond the LGBTQ plus community, especially as many people identify in multiple communities. There include our undocumented neighbors, Black and Brown Philadelphians, who have faced historic injustices, and those at the margins of our communities, like our elders and those with disabilities who rely on the federal government just to get by. Let me be clear, the attack on vulnerable communities by Trump and Musk is a moral failing. All politics are local. Our city stands in solidarity with those on the margins, those who are underrepresented, underserved, and under attack. We will continue to speak truth to power, to hold our leaders accountable, and to ensure that every decision, every policy reflects our collective commitment to fairness and equity. So on this World Social Justice Day, and on my birthday, the only gift I'm asking for is that we, as a legislative body, continue to reaffirm our shared resolve to protect those who need protecting in the new Trump era. Let this moment remind us that every day is an opportunity to advance social justice, to challenge the status quo, and to stand together against forces that seek to divide us. Here's to another year of progress, to another year of standing up for what's right, and to a future where justice truly prevails for all. Thank you very much.
Before we wrap up, I want to take a moment, a personal privilege, to acknowledge our counterpart in Harrisburg, State Representative Darisha Parker, representing the Northwest Philadelphia. Thank you for being here. I know you're working on a budget process right now, and so we shall be having conversations with you in the future regarding the needs and support of City Council. Last, but definitely not least, I want to acknowledge Councilmember Mark Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to acknowledge the resolution on your behalf we introduced today on the Avenue of the Arts and the properties of the University of the Arts, and what it means to the City of Philadelphia. All members of the council signed on to the resolution, noticing that the Avenue of the Arts is a big cultural hub for our city, and the use of those buildings is really important. We advocated to the trustee, to the District, to the Attorney General's Office, and to the judge, and hopefully they will take that advocacy under consideration as they choose the winners of these bids, because it's important to keep the art use on our Avenue of the Arts. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Squillen, and thank you for your leadership on this matter. With that being said, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Council President. I move that council stands adjourned until Thursday, February 27, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. properly.
It has a moving property second. The council stand adjourned is a Thursday, February 27, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. properly. The council stands adjourned until Thursday, February 27, 2025, at 10:00 AM. Those in favor, the motion was seen in the favor, saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you all very much.